The 5th of August, all rise and say to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you all for coming, and please silence your cell phones. Alright. It's public comments, it's time for public comments regarding issues and/or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city of Waireka. Other comments period is not intended to be a question, an answer period, or conversations with the council or staff. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but may, they may take no action during the city council during this public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place it on a future agenda. When you're, when you're speaking, please speak from the podium. State, please state your name for the record to provide, providing your comments. Please address this, the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide them with minimum seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. So this is a time for public comments. I think we have some public comments. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Andrea Gilman. I'm here for two reasons. First is a date night with my husband, because I haven't seen him for like two months. And the second is, I want to talk about an event that Waireka Police Department, the association, is putting on. It is coming up this Saturday, August 7th, and it's called Cone with a Cop. The YPOA is purchasing ice cream. And in connection with Chris Ziegler, she's going to bring out her ice cream truck. And we're going to have a police officer in a car escort, front and back. And we are going to drive around city of Waireka, handing out free ice cream cones to the little kiddos. And we've got two officers, as I stated, that on their days off, they're going to suit up and come. Wives are going to help. The, we're going to start at 11:30, and we have a route, we're going to hit the apartment complex by the YMCA, the Waireka Motel and Trailer Park, the apartment complex up on Minor Street, the Turri Street Apartment Complex, Brew Street, and then if there is any ice cream left over, we will just drive around and hit the rest. We'd like to make it an annual event, and so we're going to call this the first annual, and hoping to maybe in the fall have a bicycle rodeo as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Hello.
Marie Autry, I'm here to talk about the homeless people, and I'm sure these fine folks are too.
Just, is this, we're getting, is this for the homeless?
It's for the homeless.
We're going to, we're going to go into that, so if it's not, if it's, and other than the homeless, that's why I stated in that, if it's other than homeless, that's a public comments.
Okay, so, other than the homeless.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get there too. I would really like to talk about the police chief issue. We have a fine chief that we need to keep, and we would be really stupid if we didn't, because he's doing a really good job. So, please, keep him.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comments before we get started? Okay, so what I'm going to start off with, we're going to, you know, we've got the agenda here too. But what I want to talk about first, before we get into anything, is the reason why we're here regarding the homeless. And this goes back to the Ninth Circuit Court. So I'm going to read what this appeals was and everything that, that the Ninth Circuit Court was ruling was, why we're even having any of these meetings, is because of this reason right here. So, Ninth Circuit Court Appeals issued a unanimous decision September 2018 in Martin versus the City of Boise, finding that the City of Boise, the prohibition against sleeping in public violates the Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment when the homeless individuals have no access to alternative shelter. The court held that Eighth Amendment prohibits ordinance enforced if such ordinance criminalizes homeless individuals for sleeping outside where they have no alternative shelter. So, that's in the nutshell why we're here. Now, here's some other stuff that we need to, I'm going to read on to. This is stuff that the League of Cities has, has sent us, and, and it's also, like I said, it's court ruling and everything. Although the Martin decision imposes significant constraints on dealing with homelessness encampments, it does not leave municipalities without resource. Thus, while municipalities are restricted in enforcing existing laws prohibiting camping in, on public property or requiring homeless individuals to leave their jurisdiction, municipalities can continue to apply generally applicable laws to homeless persons, such as litter laws and laws regarding the use of private property, provided that those laws do not specifically criminalize acts necessary to live. Additionally, municipalities may conduct cleanups of encampments on public property, provided that they provide advance notice before seizing and disposing of personal property, and do not arrest any persons or issue criminal citations. The Martin Court also makes clear that its options does not apply to individuals who do not have access to adequate temporary shelter, whether because they have the means to pay for it, or because it realistically is available to them for free. But though, but who, but who choose not to use it? Nor does the decision completely prohibit cities from banning sitting, lying, sleeping outside at particular times and particular locations. So, basically, what it, what it comes down to, unless we have a place for them to go, we cannot kick them out of any public place. Public places meaning parks, as in Greenhorn Park, as in Minor Street Park, as in all these other parks that we love to sit in and enjoy with our families. So that's why we're going down this whole avenue. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it's, it's not what I'm sure a lot of people want and want to hear, by no means. But it's something legally we have to do, unless we want to get sued as a city and lose every time. Any court cases that's come about so far, other than what's going on with Medford right now, they have finalized their court deal with the, with the Greenway one that they're doing, because they have an ordinance with fire danger, and that goes to public safety and infrastructure, and ready has one, and those are something that we're going to look into in the future also. But that's why I want, I wanted to state that, I wanted people to know, that's why we're here. That's why we're having all these meetings, because we have to have a place for these individuals to go, plain and simple. Right, wrong, or indifferent, none of it is, I'm sure, anybody's choice. That's obviously not our choice. I live right below Greenhorn Park, as a lot of you know, and I'm sure you feel that, I'm sure that, I don't like to have them right in my backyard either, but this is something that we have to address as a city as a whole, in a positive nature. We need to find a place for these individuals to go, so we can get them out of the parks, out of our places that we enjoy with our families. So this is, this is the reason why we're here. It's, it's not an easy decision by anybody, and I don't like to be up here just as much as any of these guys do either, on this decision making, but this is why we're here. Arthur has a short little video that he wants to show, that Channel 10 News has been, they've been doing a whole series on Channel 10 News, it's called the Ripple Effect on homelessness and the impact that it has on cities. And this is one that they're just going to talk about this briefly.
And there will be a test.
Yes.
Cheapest and most impactful way to use more taxpayer dollars for the homeless?
The thing is, as a taxpayer, I want to be smarter than my taxpayers. So I want to support programs, and I want to encourage the government to support programs that are actually going to save them.
Rover Tree, the executive director, Chad McComas, says taxpayers can save money and save the homeless at the same time. He says the average homeless person uses the emergency room four times per year, racking up around $15,000 of bills, and it's all covered by taxpayer dollars if they can't afford it. But if that same homeless person was housed at Rover Tree's urban campground, it costs taxpayers around $11,000 while getting the help they need.
I know one guy that went there, he went 90 times to go to them, 90 times. You know what that cost us as taxpayers? Is it smarter if I put him in a safe place to be where he's not going to where he wants? My dollars that go out for him.
How do you change the public perception that people should want their taxpayer money to go toward these projects, rather than leaving that homeless person on the street while they're racking up these big bills efficiently?
I think the, the argument though, for mine is that, if they understand their money is already going to the circle, then they start thinking, well, what's a better deal? You know, if I'm going to give you $100, I want to give you $100, it's going to make a bigger impact than, than not.
It's not only taxpayer dollars going to those emergency room visits, but also an increase in your insurance payments. All Care Health Vice President Josh Ballard told me, when a homeless person can't pay their bill, insurance companies raise the cost of their policies. That way they can make up the lost money and keep hospitals open.
Leaving people in shelter as a strategy to reduce homelessness is, is a, is a much more expensive way to do it. Law enforcement interactions cost money, incarceration costs money, hospitalizations cost money. The likelihood of reinfection, where reinvent to the hospital is much, much higher to discharge it back to the street.
How do you make the public see things from your point of view?
There's enough evidence and points to just be effective, that I think the argument could be, if we should do this, if we should do more of this, both, both from the human aspect, but then also, if you're worried about your, you know, your tax contribution and the money that you're putting out in the community, that's, that's another variable argument.
According to a 2019 Kaiser Family Foundation survey, one-third of Oregonians have Medicaid or are completely uninsured, which Engel says likely includes the homeless. That cost then trickles down to Oregon residents through their taxes and those increased insurance payments. Engel told me the best way to make a change in the homeless situation, vote for new measures and programs that use your taxpayer money more efficiently, and you can also volunteer to help.
Awesome, thank you, Arthur. So I just thought I'd play that, just so people know that this is, one of the reasons why we're here, is we do have a permanent urban campsite. Cool. Jazzing it up a little bit, Arthur, thanks. So, we do have a permanent location in mind for individuals that don't know that already. The location is at the base of Foothill, right next to the Beacon of Hope Shelter that they're putting in. Hopefully, in the future, we're hoping to work together with the Beacon of Hope and make this a more productive place, and keep, like I said, some of these individuals out of our parks and in a safe environment, where they have a place, a porta potties, the, everything that they need, the basic essentials that they need. And that's the reason why we're doing this, obviously, because we need to be legal, for one thing, and we also want to help out these individuals. Some of these individuals, I want to reiterate to, I said this in the, in past meetings, some of these individuals are the locals, people that we grew up around, we know, prominent figures in this, in this area. One individual, this one young man, he, his family's lived here forever, part of, I'm not going to say names, but it's people that you would know. And unfortunately, this individual, at one point in time, took some bad drugs, and now is homeless, and has been homeless for quite a while. You've seen him walking up and down the streets. If you, if I described him, you'd know exactly who I'm talking about. This is a local, this is a local gentleman. And so we have to look after our locals too, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, whether you agree with them doing the bad drugs, or whatever the circumstances may be, that's, that's the choice. But these are local people too, that have hearts and have families in this area. So just keep that in mind, I just want everybody to know that they're not just, they're not just people out there doing drugs and doing bad things, or people that our family and, and our, your family, our family may know. So, with that in mind, we'll get into this, which is 3A, which is the location of temporary alternate. Now, this is, I want to state also, this is an alternate location that we were, were addressing, that's why pretty much everybody's here, is this alternate site, which includes the, or should I say, the location of 1500 Mill Road in Waireka. So, at this point, I think I would like to open it, as long as the council's okay, I would like to open it up to public comments, and that's okay with the council? Yes, well, yeah, we normally have five council members here. Both of them have prior engagements, one of those actually a family issue, and actually, both of them are family issues. So anyways, they're not here present, so the three of us, you get to throw stones at, so anyways. Any, you know, is that okay? Okay, so right now, I'm opening up for public, public comments, so come on down.
Okay, so now, now.
Okay.
Okay, so, we gotta stop kicking this down the road, because I don't know if y'all are aware, but there's huge fires going on. They're taking out cities and towns. I don't want to be one of those places. They just arrested a lady for starting a fire on the greenway. If she had started that fire, Butcher Hill is my front porch. You know, I don't want our town to go up in flames. Putting them out on Mill Road there, that, they're going to be right in the creek, because the creek is where the shady spot is, it's ridiculous. They already are mostly at Lower Greenhorn Park, that's where they all need to be for right now. I know it's our park, but no place is perfect. No place is perfect. No place is going to be absolutely perfectly acceptable to anyone. But right now, they're there, and to get them to move is going to be pulling teeth. We need to hurt them all there and get them off Deer Creek, get them off Waireka Creek, get them out of the bushes up on the hill, and get them down there. Please, don't kick it down the road. I know there's only three of you, so what, that means you can't make a decision, because the other two are no-shows?
We can't, it just has to be analysis on stuff like that.
Seriously, you guys, because I don't want to lose my house, I don't want to lose my town. You guys swore an oath to take care of the people here in Waireka. You've kicked it down the road, this is like, what, how many times have you done this? At what point are you going to say, okay, we're going to decide? And I know Greenhorn is not perfect, I mean, it's not perfect. But hell, there's water right there, you know? It's easy to throw water on them, I mean, the fire, them. You know, it's, it's the best solution, it seriously is, because Mill Creek is not okay at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Everybody else is, yell.
Yell, you don't have to yell, honestly, but you can, you can make a point. Come on down, don't be shy, that's fine.
So, most everybody kind of knows who I am, for the most part. Preston Richardson, I just am here to voice, I'm not here to downplay the problem that we have with homeless. I think it's a huge issue. They, I think they need to be treated fairly. I think that, my understanding was Beacon of Hope, which I think is great, that that was eventually going to become the permanent solution, I think that's great. I think that's a fantastic goal. I believe, my understanding was that that was going to be somewhat up and running October to November. So, from what I've been able to put together on the Mill Creek site that we're talking, we've got a 60-day notice that has to go out, that puts us in October, November. So, I'm having a hard time wrapping my hand around, does it make sense? I get that it's city property, I get that it moves them away from some of the parks, it gets them out from behind the college. My wife is a, is an employee at the college, she's been dealing with it for a long time, okay? Trying to get into the office, sometimes they're on the porch, sometimes she can't go to work, she's got to wait. It is what it is. I think going to Mill Creek, there's no shade, other than the greenway. I don't know if you know, but my place of business that I'm a partner in is right there. There's like 30 mile an hour winds that rip through that thing, and it's nothing but a dirt lot that you guys are looking at. So they're going to end up in the greenway. There's manufactured homes that are sitting right next to that greenway. So we want to talk about fire? Right now, if it burns up off the college, we're going to burn some trees, that, and there's some homes up there, don't get me wrong, there are ways away. We can run, there's fire lines, I believe, already put in, you know? I, I'd rather lose some trees than some people that are in some homes. And I think that Mill Creek, I get that we need a spot, it's going to be a tough decision. I don't envy you guys whatsoever, okay? It's tough decisions. I don't think Mill Creek's the right one. I, I just think there's enough negatives there that don't outweigh the positives of that specific situation, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Becky Ives, I'm with Ciskiastre Credit Union, here representing the credit union tonight. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, as everybody knows, we have a brand-new building going up, right there on Fairlane, right by Mill. We have a lot of the same concerns, while the situation may be fixed before we get to move in, there's still construction going on, there's still a lot of danger there, fire danger, equipment, et cetera. And if it shouldn't get fixed before we move in, we have real concerns about the safety of our staff, safety of our members. We have ATMs people will be going to at night during the dark hours, safety protocols that people that are in the area on a regular basis can observe, watch. We have employees that work late from time to time, so we're not real comfortable with the fact that we would have people coming and going in, in our parking lots, sleeping around our, our building, that type of thing. So, I'm not going to go on and on, because like I said, it's a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but we, we definitely have the same concerns, but we also have the same heart that we do know that there needs to be a solution, there needs to be a place. This is our community, these are people in our community, and we do need to help them. So, you do have our support, and I don't envy you either.
Thank you, Becky. Why, I know there's more individuals, come on. It's okay. You can take it.
Hello, members of the council, my name's Strice Cha. I'm, live right here in the city of Waireka, I'm a Waireka resident. I have the same concerns that many other residents have, in regards to the homeless population. And it is a serious problem out there. However, as we know, it is a serious problem, so I encourage that, I would encourage the council to seriously making a decision on its side. It's, there's no such, there's no ideal site for a homeless encampment. And everybody has concerns, I have the concerns that everybody else has too, I live here. But, we have to help out our homeless population, and I, I'm, I'm speaking as an individual. I, I work for, I work for the county, I see these people every day, I saw them, I see them, a lot of them are, have families that live here, a lot of them were born right here, the city of Waireka, a lot of the homeless individuals. And we are talking about our family members, our friends. So, I really would like the council to, to make a decision and decide on a site, and move with, move forward with, with this temporary site. And it is a hard decision, decision to make, but we elected you council members to make a decision. And we expect no more, but no less from each and everyone of you council members to make a decision on the temporary site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, Stacy Brooks, I am one of the owners of Waikaka. And I know that it's a horrible problem, and you guys have a horrible decision to make. I, not just because that piece of property backs up to ours, but we've been talking to everyone along the creek for a year and a half, trying to find a way to get it clean. We don't want another fire, I believe it was called the Alameda Fire in Ashland that went all the way to Metford, and wiped out talent in part of Phoenix. If you put them there and they go down in the creek, it doesn't matter what direction that wind blows, it's going to be a disaster. Mobile homes are like matchboxes, they will go up nothing in seconds. If it goes the other direction, have you ever seen a tire burn? You will not be able to put that out for days. Then you have Ciskiastre Petroleum, that is right there with fuel tanks. The other direction, you've got Campora, the propane, I mean, of all the places that you guys have talked about, that one, I mean, it's a disaster any direction the wind blows, and you all know, every night, the wind kicks up in our town. And I just, I might feel different if the creek wasn't so ready to go. When the call came out the other day, when it caught on fire, it just made me sick. I mean, we could lose our whole town, we could lose our whole park. Les Schwab, if it goes up, you don't put tires out when they catch on fire. So, I really hope you guys consider that every direction from that piece of property is just not a good spot, they all could burn and be a disaster. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Stacy. Anybody else, I'm sure there's got to be somebody else. Okay, so now, we'll close the public section, section of this, and open it up to council. So, we'll start off with, which we just discussed, the alternative site at 1500 Mill, Mill Road. And I want, obviously, some opinions on that.
It's been a long, long road for us, just in a short time. I've been sitting here, they've been sitting here a lot longer than I have, dealing with the issue. We went through at least 510 properties down the city of our towns, and it's been a short period of time. This is my opinion, it's the last, I mean, in my opinion, the last discussion for us to have a temporary site for a vacation, provided that the road should be not, should be foreign, or we do not report this property. It's probably going to be status quo, our parks will have the homeless, our creeks are going to have the homeless, Deer Creek will have the homeless, campus later, they'll have the homeless for a little while, until we have the permanent location ready. And for, you know, nobody wants them there back there, it's a whole different group. We've got several meetings, it's been a group from the neighborhood, through the freeway, living street. See one from Campus Drive, we ever helped Campus Drive, and nobody wants them there. So we're up against a roadblock, really, until the, you said something that I heard you, after fashion waiting it, I just don't know if that's, you know, this location is going to be one I'm going to select.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, we have been doing this a long time, we are not afraid to make a decision. What we are afraid of is not hearing everybody's opinion and voice that's involved. And every, like Corrie said, every time we suggest a consideration of a location, we get a different group of people. So, we want to hear what people think, and I'm aware that we're, everybody in this room is aware that this decision isn't an easy one. I'm siding with Cory regarding, by the time we prepared any property, it's going to be close to the permanent location being ready, whether it's worth...
Whether it's worth worth the disruption of all parties concerned, the police department, the fire department monitors. Preparing the property, consulting the neighbors on what issues they might have that we can prevent ahead of time, this kind of thing. That I think we're going to be within weeks of the permanent location being ready. I personally think we should. Keep status quo. The only other option. The only other additional. Work I think we need to do is to provide porta potties in strategic locations and. Pick up the trash a little more more often, simply because that's one of the main. Concerns I get calls about, and I don't know about the rest of you, but we get lots of calls and emails and stopping the grocery stores. And that's why I'm shopping at two AM. So anyway, I we all hear this and one of the proposed locations was over by my house as well. And. I could have lived with it except for other people in my community were concerned because I'm right by the creek. So same situation, everyone's concerned with fire as we all should be and aware of it. And work to save the city and keep it. Comfortable as well. I would also like to propose, which no one here has mentioned. Even the guy on the television from Metford. Mentioned how to take how we want to take care of the homeless. I don't want to take care of the homeless. I want them to help them to learn how to take care of themselves. If we're going to take care of them, it's going to be a lifelong commitment and will never catch up. So I would like to assist them in learning how to take care of themselves. And whatever avenue that we can do, but as far as a temporary location, I think we need to leave it as is and put out a few porta potties. And we're waiting on the state information for soil evaluations and determining how deep we have to dig. Blah blah blah. But that's my opinion.
So yeah, in regards to what has basically been stated by numerous people and locations and I can go on and on and. And I most people don't know. The amount of man hours that I've put into this and. Research I've done on this over the past five years, actually more than five years, but just locally five years. There's been a lot of issues. It's it comes for for us. The main issue is, like I said, right now is mainly issues of fire danger. We we just discussed, you know, this keep them as is, which I understand that's fine and dandy, but. The main issue there still goes back to fire danger. So I'm just addressing council too on that. Main issue is a fire danger. If we leave it at Deer Creek, we have not addressed that fire danger. Unless I heard otherwise on that. So I know. Less and I don't want to put you on the spot, chief. Have you been able to mitigate any fire? Problems there yet? I know you were. I know we discussed it, but I didn't know if you had a chance. Sorry about that, chief. Chief Lemus people. Thank you. Sorry, put you on the spot.
To answer your question on the last, what I recall from our last homeless meeting was that Matt Bray, which I know he couldn't be here tonight, was. Going to work with the garden club or the folks that were responsible for. And we're going to try to come up with a solution to do some mitigation as far as fuels in that area, but that was pending his discussion with them as far as. Not removing or damaging or ruining those. So at that, that's what I was waiting for, and I haven't heard anything. So. Goes up to me. I mean, I met with Mr. Brooks at Wayaka. That would be done. That area by Mill Creek would have been done, but we have to worry about. Other issues with fishing game, working in the creek, etc. So there's always red tape. We don't like those excuses, but that's what we're up against. So as soon as I can get to go ahead, I meet with Matt and whoever whoever else is involved and we'll. We'll have an engine there. We'll have personnel that can be available. You know, they're all volunteers, but and then work with, you know, reducing the fuels in that area. That'd be. You know, that would be as soon as we can do that, we can help, you know, get that done. But I'm just, we're just waiting on that decision. So. And there's there's plenty in there that can be done to to help mitigate that. So.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of fuels there. Like there are a lot of dead grasses and not too. So.
Right.
So I think it's a challenge. That's why that's why I want to bring forth. And the other thing I want to bring forth to the council, leaving it at next to COS. That's a couple of things there. We got, I'm sorry, chief. They did do so just for people know that Chief Lemus did spearhead a program over by the COS. Location where a number of homeless individuals are at right now. They took and cleared out, did a fire line around there and did some fire mitigation up by there, which is great. So that lessened that fire danger up in there considerably. So that's awesome. The big winds and still some brush there still could take off pretty easily with the way the winds are going and stuff. But you know, we appreciate you jumping on that right away, getting that done. That needed to be done.
And any of the city properties that if there are the hand crews are available, obviously, right now, they're they're not getting a breath. You all know what's going on on both sides of the county. So as soon as we can get them, if they're available. It may be later than what we want, but every day that they're available, if they're not told they have to rest or what have you, then there's not a fire. We can put them to work. It's just going to be. It's going to be a timing issue.
Yeah.
So as far as Deer Creek goes, it's really just communicating with one another and making sure that we can set a time and. You know, not have to worry about starting a fire while trying to prevent one at the same time. So we have resources there. Plus, you saw our. Our added addition Tuesday night that will have to you'd have that on standby too. So. We can get it done. We just need to go jump through the hoops. So.
No, I thank you. Thank you. Like I said, jumping on that. The other the other thing we need to be aware of at the that location next to, I know everybody refers to it next to behavioral health, but it's actually right next door to COS. They're also going to be sure you're going to be starting up their education programs here shortly too. So we talked about it being in back door. Well, that's. You know, right in their back door, and I know for a fact that those people feel threatened on a daily basis when that's going on in their backyard, which is fine. We've got, like I said, we've mitigated some of the fire issues, but as far as I can tell, there's no place to put a porta potty there. It's all on a hillside. Unless we want to put it in front of COS.
I was thinking on the sidewalk in the corner.
We don't have any sidewalks there. The only sidewalks are from behavioral health.
That is the draw for the program. I would be comfortable with that.
It is. It's definitely part of the part of the draw. Most definitely. Yeah, so. So those are the things I want to address the council on that aspect that those those are some issues. And so if we're going to, you know, think about keeping them in the existing locations, then that's the problems we're going to be faced with there. And I'm not sure how. Yeah, we'd have to. For one thing, we can't legally put them on a sidewalk. You can't be blocking the sidewalk. That's the whole idea of our things we we tell everybody else. So we can't as a city, we can't. Override our own things. We tell everybody else they can't.
I agree. Down at the corner, there are some platter areas.
There is some area. Yeah, they're right. And actually, if you want to do it, you go right across the street as far as that goes on our own property. It is flat there. So that's is an option. If we do a porta potty, you'd have to go across the street. But we do, if we are going to keep them at this location, we do need to have some type of porta potty and something for them because. Right now, the park gets the actual restrooms get closed down at nighttime like Lower Green Horn Park. So there's no place for these individuals to go.
And that that was happening due to vandalism. So it isn't as if we didn't try.
Exactly. So that's if that's an option, that's we're throwing up things to the council that we have to address those issues.
I just want to clarify what I said. That's closed, leaving them, but also. Taking the action steps as far as learning the fire danger on Deer Creek. Porta potties is taking extra steps up where they're at, maybe an extra car to like that. But taking our resources and money that would be spending just to spend a portion of break them, the temporary location. Spending it on where they're at and saving the money to go to our permanent. So when I say that's probably not just like how it's not doing it. But we bring in the porta potties, give the trash pick that on a maybe another day or a hundred days. And then prepare the properties where they are as best as we can. Doing fire.
We got you.
But anywhere in Warricka, talking about fire, there's a fire danger everywhere, in every spot. My house, my yard is a fire danger.
You should know it once in a while.
Only up until ten AM. I'm kidding.
Just please.
So the top priorities for fire mitigation at this point is Deer Creek and. Backside of Wayak, correct?
Yes. For that for that site, for the site on Mill Creek. Yes, that would be. Those would be contiguous, correct? And then the other site where we have homeless is Deer Creek. Yes. Yes, in both on both accounts. That answer your question.
Okay, but. If we choose after a vote to not to leave everything as is, not use the middle street. Location, I would still want Wayak to be the stay in that same priority for.
Right. And it's that's been discussed with Fire Safe Council. We have that as a priority. And I right now, I know Larry Alexander was working on that, and I can follow up with him to find out where we're at to get. Things moving, but it's going to take time to get that as a as a grant. Now, if we can get okay from fish and wildlife, and there's no issue there. I can try to see what I can get, you know, like I said, the Cal Fire Hand Crews and get some people in there to, you know, clean all that up as soon as possible. I would prefer that because. It doesn't take any time, but you know, it's it's that red tape trying to get through the bureaucracy of fishing wildlife and making sure that we're not going to get. Dinged on that and what we can do inside the boundaries of the creek. So that's something I'm not really familiar with. So I know Matt is. I'm sorry. Well, that's fine. So do you see? Do you see where my where I'm going with that is? Yeah, it's a priority to get that done. It was when I first talked to Rick and Stacy, and so. It's trying to get something in place is and get a project started. Especially with the grant process. That's that's going to take time as as we all know, grants take time. If we can get with, I think it's Janay, Janay Scruggs, I think. If we can get a meeting with her, we can, you know, I would just suggest that and see if we can get something done to. Mitigate that as soon as possible and and set something up. That would be the the best scenario for everybody, whether with the whether the site goes there or not.
I can probably help with that, but I want you all to keep in mind that we are fast tracking this and it's taking this long.
Yeah. I hate to see.
Yeah.
Is there any way of applying for? So I mean, they're calling emergency, you know, with the drought and everything, right and left and. So that certain way, and I know you guys are. Hundred different ways of trying to solve the problem, but to get some emergency money so we can't. Get people, you know, out there cleaning for it up, you know, to get fire hazard, you know, knocked down. So. I'm just saying, if you don't throw the red tape, that's what takes a long time. It's like when somebody drops, you know, and says it's an emergency, jumps to the top.
Right. And I don't know.
And I'm not just saying it as far as, you know, us being right there. Why? I mean.
Yeah, it is. You're right. And Mr. Johnson, do you know of anything out there available that we could do an emergency action of some sort?
Well, I mean, there's always something you could do in a major emergency, but as I understand the situation, you're trying to. Remove things that have to be permitted by the state. So whether it's an emergency or not, if you don't have the permit from the state, you're not allowed. To go in there. And if we did something without a permit, the city would be liable for. A lot more things than, yeah, what you're creating more problems than you're solving at that point in time.
So that doesn't happen to be if there's a flood. I mean, I've heard stories about when the flood came through there and the creek got blocked up, they had. Cat whatever took to get that flood, get that rechanneled, whatever. Yeah, when it's an emergency thing like that, I don't think, you know, like say strike emergency, but I think there are a lot less loopholes if.
Yeah, there's I'm sure there's some we'll we'll definitely have to check into to that. Our biggest thing is we're lacking. A permit now. I don't know. Where do we stand on that? Do you know, Mr. Johnson?
No, I do not. In flood situations, that's absolutely correct, and the state will send. Immediately send people out to provide permits on the spot for you to do what you need to do to save property, save lives and all type of thing. That's a flood situation. And this. As I understand the situation at the moment, there is no emergency other than we believe something could happen. So that's not too. Well, it again, we're trying to get a state permit.
Yeah, and that's that's our biggest. That's our biggest thing right now is we unfortunately. Do not have this permit that we should have had. And this is what we're fighting with right now, and hopefully we will be getting that soon. Where we can mitigate some of these issues. This is one that we've brought up as a council numerous times, and it's not going away. So it's one of those issues that I'm sure it's being worked on, but it's quick enough as as far as our concerns.
Fish and wildlife permit, fish and wildlife.
No, it's us. It's the city. We we have to apply for it. So it's, yeah, it's totally on us. I mean, it's it's been brought up numerous times, let me tell you. And as the council, we have brought it up numerous times, and it's nothing that we're. Ignoring for that way.
By no means. It was applied for and we wait, and it was applied for, as I understand it, very early on in this process.
Cindy's here. Pardon me. Ms. Lynch, the project manager for that.
Yes.
Cindy, do you have a better answer?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
She knew I was back there. We got it back from E Corp. And I've gone through everything, gotten the check and plan to submit online tomorrow. Okay.
That is awesome. That's great news.
That's great. I'm sorry. I didn't record that, but I wasn't aware of it.
We were going to have it last week, but it wasn't quite ready. We got a few more things added. And that's my plan for tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Is that specific to a location or is?
It's it's the routine maintenance agreement.
For the whole Wyrick Creek area?
Yes.
Good. That's good news. Thank you.
Okay.
There you have it. So we can move forward on that.
Excuse us while we do a happy day.
Yeah. This is one of these things that we've been addressing. So anyways, back to what we're talking about as far as how we address these issues if we keep them in these locations. So I think. If we are keep them up by the campus drive, which is next to COS, which I know COS I'm sure is sure is not happy with. But if we keep it there, we definitely have to have some type of porta potties. I I would say that we need to look at the fire mitigation again in that area because it's it's been, I know some of the encampments. Have embraced some of the lumber and stuff in those areas to make those fire hazards a little bit more greater too. Some of those encampments. Are rather large and probably dangerous. So we need to address that. The like think the one, the other location that we haven't discussed tonight. Is off of Oberlin Road, the the Greenway off of Oberlin Road. We have quite a few encampments off the Greenway there. So that's another place that we need to address. Because of not being able to set aside these areas that we've talked about in the past. They the individuals have migrated to these areas and now they're. they, the individuals have migrated to these areas, and now they're in unsafe places, just like with Deer Creek. We talked about Deer Creek, we said, no, we didn't want it, you know, citizens said, no, we don't want it, we didn't want it, okay, that's fine and dandy, well, they ended up there anyways. We said, we didn't want them on Oberlin Road, on the Greenway there, nope, don't want them there, can't have it there, well, guess what, they ended up there anyways. But in the process, we didn't do any fire mitigation in, in that process, so now we are behind because we didn't do any fire mitigation in those areas. So we do have fire mitigation to do also in that area. Also in that area, we have a porta potty issue with that one too. So we'd have to address the porta potty issue in that area, and some fire mitigation. Now, in, in the fire mitigation, you know, we can, there is creative things, just like we're, I just stated to earlier with this Boise decision, that we can enforce what we have, so if we, we can move them to another spot in that location and clean up that location as long as we're not telling them they, they have to leave. So in other words, if they are in the Greenway, if they, on Oberlin Road, or COS, or Deer Creek, all these locations that these individuals are in, we can take and say, okay, we need you to move, you can move fifty feet down the road there, that's fine. We need to do some fire mitigation right here, get this cleaned up, and then, then we go and do that section, and we just do another section at a time. So this is an option too, that we need to think, and it is legal, I just read that. So it is a legal option that we can do, we are not telling them that they can't have a place to rest. We are just stating that we're trying to do fire mitigation in these areas, it's a creative way of thinking, and this is something that we're, there's some other ordinances that we're gonna be addressing in the future as a council too, just, just so you guys know, that will help with these situations. Being able to be legal, and, but still make sure that these individuals are safe and have a place to go. So that's, I just gotta, like I said, I just need to bring that up, because we actually have three places, not just one or two, but three locations that we have to address, and that, those need to be addressed not only just with fire mitigation, but also with porta potties and stuff too, because there's no place for them to go. So. I don't know what the council thinks on that, I just, I'm bringing stuff up so everybody has an idea where we're going, if we're going that direction, then great, we can go that direction. These are the things that we need to address, not just one location, so.
I've heard from a lot of residents, a lot of them told me that's where they think they should stay for now, until we get to the old drive. I've heard several people said, just leave them there, it's out of the side of the, yeah, we're about the fire, we're about fire, any care. And, but I've heard from a majority of citizens saying, why are you doing that, just leave them there for a whole water? So that's where I stand, that we just stop to the our services at the other locations they're at, until we get our, and really work hard to get our old drive property ready.
And fire mitigation. The other option that I would like to include, if the property is available, that empty lot right in the corner, right by the
The city property, or two.
Okay, that is on the opposite side.
Oh, you're talking on the, on the.
Same side as the human services, what is?
Behavior health.
Behavior health, okay, is that county or city?
The one you're talking on closest, like above Black Bear and coming that way, or on the other side going above on Four H Lane?
Behind the hotel.
Behind the hotel.
That's county.
That's county, yes. I think it would be worth, well, I think it would be a good gesture of the county to offer that property to help as a site, and a lot of it has to do with their role in this whole situation, and I think it would be a good gesture, keep them on the correct side of the hill, lessen the fire going up to the hill.
There's no shade there.
Yeah, we'd have to provide some type of shade. Yeah, that's one person's safety, usually see one person hanging out there too. So, I mean, no, that is actually a really good suggestion, but we would have to have some kind of, yeah, we'd have to have some type of shelter, just like stated. They're not, they're not gonna go there, so unless, unless you have some type of shelter, obviously they would go there. But yeah, I mean, that's definitely a good spot, if we can, with, with that tail, it'd be some type of canopies to buy shelter.
Again, they're the ones getting the state funding for the homeless.
Right.
They can provide the shelter, they can offer up some land.
By the time we go through that, ready to, we will, by the time this board of supervisors, we could probably get them okay to do it, but by the time we actually get them, by the time we get them actually to submit the funds for the shelters and stuff like that, it will be guaranteed after our permanent sponsors. Yep.
They're off the whole month? What are we doing wrong?
So no, I, I think, I think that is a good suggestion, and maybe we should have.
I think we should follow through with it anyway.
So that is flat map for the porta potties.
Pardon me?
That property is flat map for the porta potties.
Yeah, we actually have porta potty, when we did, when we did the vaccination there, that's, we had canopy set up, we had porta potties. So they have some emergency canopies that they do, but probably are being occupied right now, just because of all the fires and stuff going on that they're probably being used right now, you might guess. But it's definitely, I, if you guys want, I, Randy can push forward and check into that, or I can make a couple phone calls myself, I can know exactly who to call on those, so.
I think we need some property that's safe, throw up a few tins.
I can make phone calls, if it's, unless Randy wants to handle it.
Well, A, I don't know what property you're talking about, B, if you have a contact, just report back to the council at the August seventeenth meeting. Is that?
Whatever the council wants, I can.
Yes, please. I think we're gonna need more space, and I think it's reasonable to ask them to share the responsibility.
On a temporary basis.
Totally reasonable.
You're talking temporary.
Temporary.
I don't.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what you're asking the mayor to ask.
Sure, we'll go with that, week, week.
Yeah, well, the property, I must also state that it is for sale. There's a for sale sign.
Really?
Yes.
I did not notice.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
So, but, but, and then if we're going back to lines of that, if we're talking about that sort of thing, that what keeps us from putting in, back on the, not behind Caltrans, but on the corner over there that is our city property, not directly behind Caltrans, but we have a corner property.
Is it flat?
It's semi-flat, yeah.
Wow, I like those areas better than up on the side of the hill.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, no, well, no, straight across the street from COS, that's our property.
Oh, yeah, we're.
Yeah, well, we would keep them out of the lines of Caltrans. Yeah, we can't, we do not wanna block Caltrans, and we got, and, yeah, closer to North Cal, so we can hear about that one. So we'll definitely hear about that one too, but that's, would be easier to, you know, to push forward on that location than it would be the corner over there.
See, I'm not uncomfortable asking the county to share the responsibility.
Like I said, I'll make some phone calls tomorrow, do that. No problem at all.
Yes, I do. I think, I, I don't know what the percentages are, but I would think it would be reasonable to say at least a dozen or so of the homeless population are here for the benefits.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, and I, what I'm just saying is, I can ask, but not, I won't necessarily get an answer till, like I said, a possibly a board supervisors meeting of some sort, so that might take a whole other month before we get a direct answer.
Oh, this is gathering.
Yeah, ten months, two years, then is that what you're saying?
Oh.
Yeah, exactly, that's where we've been already, so. Well, I think, yeah, less, unless they're. We don't have to, you know, but we do, we do, no, no, we do have to, because the last time we gave Don direction basically to move forward, so if we're not going to do that, then we, I don't know, how we, how do we go about doing that?
But at the moment, you're gonna make contact with the county, I assume you're then hopefully gonna inform me what site we're talking about and what the questions are, I can follow up.
So I'm sorry, let's, let's regress. What Corey's asking is, we're going back to the Mill Street property.
Oh, okay.
And he's asking if we're moving forward on that, because this is part of the decision-making tonight, and if we're not going forward with that property at this point in time, we need to call Don probably, because last meeting, we told Don to move forward on the process of that, so.
That happened. That happened, he did exactly that. So the notice has been issued, the sixty days is, like, you know, that time is.
We were gonna do that anyway. We were gonna do that anyway.
Right, okay.
So that's okay.
Okay, so there, there's nothing in the way of site preparation that we can do until obviously the property is vacated by the current tenant, but after that, whatever is needed could be done.
So as of this point, then we're not moving forward as far as a, and I want to, just to be, the council in pre-honest, we are not moving forward as far as that being a temporary location for the homeless.
As well, I decline.
Okay, so then I will decline that also, so that is as far as.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So as far as a temporary location for the homeless, that is now taken off the board, we're still, as far as, we've already moved forward on, on the process as far as Don giving a notice and stuff like that, I feel, I think as, as a council, this, we're still moving forward on that.
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving still forward on that, part of that, but we're not going to have that as a location, that's a break.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I make myself as clear as mud?
No, I, I get it.
So a quick suggestion on the place next to the college. I mean, how, how much work would it take to say, take the, the city backhoe down there, spend an hour, flatten out.
Flatten out area.
A twenty by twenty area, throw a, a, a truckload of gravel down, throw some porta potties up so they're accessible from, from the highway there, and, you know, put a little city time invested into just flattening the spots, so they're not porta potties, they're there.
Yep.
They're not going anywhere, so you guys have a permanent solution, just an idea.
Yeah, so on something like that, no, it's, I actually thought about that too. The only downfall to that is, and, and I still think it's probably more appropriate to have them across the street, just for the fact, as far as porta potty goes, just for the fact is, a lot of that, in that area is they, they would have to remove the dirt, now, if we hadn't get a heavy storm, the, the bank on that will deteriorate rapidly, and it would cause a massive amount, I've seen it before, that obviously I've lived in a fire. So I know the whole area, that, that area really well. So that, you know, I thought about that, 'cause I went up there and looked at that same exact thing that you're talking about, and I looked at it, it's like, no, the, the ground's already deteriorating right through that area anyways, if we were to get a good, you know, thunder buster, which hopefully will give some rain, it would probably cause a lot of mess, so I, I mean, still, I think we'd be better off putting the porta potties across the street, either on city property or on behavior health property or something of that sort. No, thank you though. So. Yes, please.
Now that we're kind of at the end of the rope with our homeless discussion of properties.
Exhausted.
We've processed all properties, I think we're determined what's going to do. I would ask that we just, the council, our future Thursday and ask that we, something else up regarding homeless be moved to the agenda item on our regular Tuesday meetings.
I'll second that.
Actually, yeah, I think it's, but it'll be, that's something we can do forward on.
It's not an agenda's item to.
So nothing really to vote on, but we can have a consensus on it, yes.
That's done.
I think, well, unless something else comes up.
For now. Yeah, well, and we, like you said, we can bring it up on a regular meeting. A lot of it, a lot of it's gonna be, yeah, it's definitely, a lot of it can be updates, because we do need some updates. Definitely need some more updates on what's going on, especially with the permanent location. And a lot of that can be brought forth on a regular city council agenda meeting, so. I agree, at this point in time, we're pretty much exhausted of our, any avenues, other avenues we have, but we need, we need to have clarification before we go any further with this meeting. So we made clarification on the property, Mill Street property. We need to have clarification for Mr. Johnson on how to move forward on cleaning up the locations and what that means, so. Fire mitigation, obviously, is gonna be a huge one for Chief Loomis, how do we, how do we address that? Because right now our resources are tapped, I mean, type of fire mitigation issues. So we have that issue, and obviously porta potties, which that's pretty, that's an easy one to address, but we still need to give Mr. Johnson direction on that too.
Okay, I think we need a little input from our finance director regarding what funds are available that are still left remaining in the budget for that.
Right.
And then we know how far it can go, yes?
Well, the two missing members of the council.
Are the finance.
Are the finance, yes.
And, and they attended a meeting earlier this week where the budget was actually presented, so there are some questions we're going to answer, bring it back to them for a second meeting, and then bring it to the council. So you're gonna see very quickly what the answers to that question is.
So in regards to that, is that because of what, I mean, why are you asking that question, I guess?
Or you just, I thought you just said that there was no more, there are no more funds available for five minutes?
No, no, I said, no, I'm, no, I didn't say no more of the funds, I just said of resources. I said our resources are tapped, in other words, everybody's fighting fires right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that type of resource, I'm sorry, not financial resources, our, our financial resources are pretty tapped, but don't get me wrong, I.
We're taking donations.
Yeah, but, but we, you know, this is something we cannot go without. If we're gonna leave them in these locations, we need to have porta potties, plain and simple, this is, this is nothing, there's no option to that. If it has to be, I'll pay for the porta potties or whatever, I'm like, I'm past that point, it's like, we need porta potties, 'cause it's not fair for those individuals, it's not fair for the environment to let that happen, so. Yes, please.
Sorry to interrupt, but my question is on the fire mitigation, we have a pretty strong net community, a lot of people that are really willing to work. I don't know liability-wise or what it is, but I would imagine that if we push this community to help clear some of this stuff, I think you'd be surprised at how much help you would receive if that was.
I would love to see that happen.
You know, so I mean, I think it would have to be something that was brought forward by city, you know, by the city and said, hey, look, we're looking at doing fire mitigation in these areas, we're looking for volunteers. I fully understand liability, there's gonna be, I know there's liability involved with that, especially if you've got power tools and stuff like that to clear, if, if the permits came through, I think if that was brought out and addressed with the community, I think that you would have a lot more help than we think you would.
And I, you know, and I, I, I think we're, we're a strong community, especially when it comes to proactive volunteer work and stuff like that. It becomes a little more challenging whenever you mention homelessness in, in any area. We, we actually had, and this is, I was gonna bring forth too, so here, a couple weeks ago, we did, on our permanent location, we did a cleanup day there, so we spent about three quarters of the day cleaning up that area, we had members of Beacon Hope there, it was awesome, Don, thank you, we had, you know, we had a number of individuals helping us, so it's great to see that. We had actually a, a person that lives down the Deer Creek area was there, and loved to see that, she was awesome. She was here a few of our meetings ago, voiced her opinion about having it at Deer Creek, she didn't wanna have it at Deer Creek, you know, the homeless individuals, and that's when we suggested, hey, we're doing a cleanup day over on our permanent location, she showed up. She ran a weed eater, seventy-year-old lady ran a weed eater the whole time. I thought it was awesome. Which, I don't like, I don't like to run a weed eater for three or four hours. She did it. I was pretty amazed.
You might get a little more if you sold a little more on fire mitigation instead of cleanup itself, you have to turn yourselves a cap on a little bit.
Absolutely, especially if we say where it's gonna be at, so, I'm all for it, all for it.
Excuse me, I would like the chief's opinion on that, 'cause you would be responsible for it, but.
Well, it depends on, just, just what we did last time, so when we did that, we had waivers, you have to sign waivers, and we're not responsible. And if we did a bigger program like that, we would probably want fire, somebody from the fire Um, and if we did a bigger program like that, we would probably want um fire, somebody from the fire department to be at least on call. And all the, obviously, we have to do it in the morning hours, couldn't do it in these later, then, you know, lunchtime would be about the latest we can run to at that point in time. It's because of fire danger, so there is, yeah, definitely ways to get around it, uh, we can make that happen, so. Um, if that's something, you know, we wanna move forward with, I think we need to uh put it out there. You guys wanna try to set forth a date, obviously, the challenge of that is because we have it there. So obviously, it can't be the next week. So I I would be glad to spearhead that, um, worth, you know, working with the chief and working with the rest of the council. And however, to do a cleanup day, but we have to pick a time, we have to pick a location, we got too many locations and we have to do one at a time, so. And obviously, we have to work with uh Chief Gilman in regards to that, because those places that we're going to do cleanup at. We will have to move some of those individuals to different locations, so obviously, we have to work closely with both chiefs in order to make that happen. I'm all for it, yeah, absolutely. Um, well, I know, like, um, through the police department, they have their own little um site that they can um. Facebook page that they can do, and then we just encourage public, we just get a hold of very, you know, get get a hold of you guys. If you don't mind us getting a hold of you guys and say, hey, why don't you guys put it out on Facebook too, Siskiess Grapevine, put it out there, I mean, same type of thing. I'm I'm all for it, I'm all, this, this is a community problem and it needs to be a community solution too. And I appreciate any input, any, you know, positive input we can get as far as, you know, out there weed eating with us, hey. That's what it takes, it's, this is a community problem, so we don't see Wariqua burned down like what happened up in uh Nattalent and Phoenix and stuff. This is our community, most of us have lived here all of our lives and love this area, and we don't, I don't wanna lose it, I know that. Absolutely, if we pick a date and I, it would be, it would be better if the community got more involved in it in that aspect than. Than having the cities like me run it. We could do a community effort. The only thing what I can say is what we uh need to do. Is the Siski Parks and Greenways, uh, we need to have them involved in it, because some of those, um, as far as the greenway goes. There is some sensitive plants and whatnot that they have planted through some of those areas that we'd have to be cautious on. We don't wanna rip them out, we don't wanna destroy them. So that's something that we discussed on our last meeting, if we're gonna do any of these fire mitigation problems, we have to work with them. Because they have actually planted certain plants that are um possibly endangered and stuff like that, so we'd have to just. Well, no, not necessarily, so the permit process is in the creek bed itself, if some of these areas that um that we're talking about. Um, are off the greenway or off that creek area far enough that we could actually mitigate some of those without doing the permit. So there's, there is actually some green or some leeway there, yeah. Um, I don't know.
Let us get all the information.
Yeah.
From the sources, so we can be accurate.
Part of it, yeah. Yeah, but we can, what we can do is we can. Yeah, liability, we don't wanna, you know, there's certain things that we need to make sure everybody's safe, but no, I think if we pick a date and we structure it with the chiefs. And then the this citizens run with it, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. And I just, I would love to see a community effort on tackling this issue. Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I was just gonna say, I I think it's an excellent idea. All of the sensitive areas, environmentally sensitive that require permitting, your crews are gonna take care of cleaning those up. Because that's part of our permit, we have to do it. The other areas, uh, I'd be more than happy to appoint the two chiefs to meet with whomever to keep this idea going and to see what. Effort can be done and when, and they'll be happy to work, very happy, right?
I'm sure both of them will just want to see some type of forward progress, period.
Yeah, better, you know, fire mitigation than, yeah, other issues with.
Yeah.
People, uh, so, yeah, we'll we'll be happy to follow up on that.
Okay, so I guess let's let's find out some more details. I guess the, our next city council meeting is where we at.
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth, so if we can bring that back on a regular city council meeting, some information.
Yeah.
And then we can pick a date at that point in time, so I encourage uh more individuals to come to our city council meeting too. I'd love that, I'd love to have a full house every time.
If if that's enough time for the, for them to figure out what is they wanna recommend, then we'll get that back to you on the seventeenth, otherwise it'll be the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, if we could um possibly know some of that, if we can get as much information ahead of time, so if we. So we can tell the public whether or not, you know, because they're coming specifically to engage in that topic.
And we're specifically talking about city properties in this case.
Correct, the pla- the places we were talking about are the greenways, uh, both greenways, and is this correct?
And behind YAC.
And by, yeah, well, that, yeah, obviously, that, but that's, that we do have to wait for the the sixteen hundred, that's for sure.
Well, not all of the property, but those portions of the property were permitted as needed, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we're waiting for the, at that's this point, we'll get the fire chief to tell us which are the priority areas. List, and then the chief, you know, has contacts with everybody in town who wants to be a firefighter.
Exactly. Awesome, okay, well then, uh, this point, um. I kinda give it a update on the permanent site, on what we've done, we've done some clearing of that area. Um, we're just moving, we're swaying on the permanent site, we're waiting on the ground soil um test to move forward on that. And once we're, I think we're, I think Matt was saying, this, I think September, we're gonna be able to do that if I recall correctly. But we're gonna be able to move forward on on the ground prep, cleaning that up, so that'll be a positive thing to be able to work for that. We are gonna plan, just so the public knows too, we're, we will, at the next city council meeting, I'll announce another cleanup day at the permanent location too. So if anybody wants to join in on that, then I'll I'll have a permanent or I have a date for that too, because we wanna. We have a little bit more cleanup there to do before they can actually get in there with some some equipment. Um, so a lot of limbs and stuff that are in the way, clear that out. One nice thing about the permanent location is there's trees lined up through there, so there is shade there. We're going to offer at this location, uh, obviously porta potties, hand sanitation stations. We're going to have uh fire pits there, so they're controlled fire pits too. Um, this, this camp will hold up to um thirty campsites in that area. So it's, it's should alleviate some of the uh pressure in some of these other areas too. Um, will everybody go, it's homeless, go to this location? No, they won't, but we, if we get a big chunk of the individuals going to this location. Will definitely help on the other areas that we um find their problem, you know, obviously, the um. Greenways and stuff like that would like the individuals to be out, cleared out of the the greenway, so we can enjoy our greenways. And be able to take our family and go for a walk and stuff down there and keep them out of the park system and and everything, so. We'll be have another cleanup day on that, I'll announce that at the next city met uh city meeting, council meeting. Um, as far as that goes, I don't know, um, Don, I don't, I hate to put you on the spot, but is there, as far as the shelter that's going next door. Do you have any updates on that by any chance? So.
Well, I, we do have some information, Mr. Mayor, uh, we recently had a board meeting and we're hoping to press forward. Before the end of the summer. We're not going to, by the time of this next, this winter rolls around, the winter shelter season will be called. We are not going to have a finished building, but we are hoping to have a building which is dry and uh. And contained such that we will be able to uh shelter a certain number of homeless on the floor essentially each night. Because we've always done our winter shelter program, and we're hoping to do that at the location. And so if the adjacent property, which you're referring to as your permanent site, is available and used as a campsite. I think hopefully, fingers crossed, by uh by late October, early November, we're going to have a property here in the city. Where we can begin to concentrate in a productive way, the homeless population. The problem I hear being discussed, that I think of it, as I hear, what you're all wrestling with is it's, the problem is so dispersed. We have so many little communities in our larger community, and each one of those smaller communities is is impacted in a certain negative way. And if we can take positive steps toward collecting uh in a in a positive way our homeless population and ministering to them. And dumping them in a in a con- more concentrated location, I think that's a great positive development.
Absolutely.
We're excited about what we're hearing, that starting to happen.
Absolutely, thank you so much, uh, this is, this, I'm sorry, I should have properly introduced you, it's, this is Don Langford. He actually, uh, president, I'd say, of of the Beacon of Hope, is how you.
Member, I'm a member of the board and uh, Pat JBC, the next to me is another member of the board and uh.
Didn't see their pass, sorry.
Always glad to attend and we learn a lot and uh come to appreciate just how big a problem this is for the city. It's so multifaceted, complex and frustrating all at once. There's no single solution, of course, if you look better than I, um, we're just all hoping to be a part of the situation.
Yeah.
If we have enough parts, positive pieces coming together, maybe it's gonna start to look like.
Thank you, Don, thank, thank you, Pat, for coming too, appreciate it. You guys have been a huge, will be a huge asset uh for the community. You really will, and we thank you for all your hard work, you guys, you guys have put a lot of time into this uh shelter, and it's been going for quite a while. And if anybody, you know, wants to help out in the shelter situation, they will gladly take donations. To help them out, to get it up and running, and and the more people know about that, the the faster they can get it up and going, the the the. Less of an impact on our community will will have, so we we appreciate you guys, you know, pushing forward and and keep, you know, keep going down that road. And and, you know, getting all the volunteers, there's a lot of volunteers that went into that, I mean, you guys have seen numerous volunteers. And all that's, that literally volunteers, they just volunteer their time, uh, very little money has been spent. Because they have such a great volunteer base, and it's awesome, it really is, so anybody that can, you know, put some money forward to help them out. It's, it's great for the community, the community will benefit from that, put it that way, yes, thank you so much. Awesome, yes, Don Marie.
I have two questions, um, one is, you know, we talk about homeless people, but we don't give out a number. And I don't think people understand how many homeless people we're talking about, so it'd be great if you could mention the number every now and again. So people feel it, because they see a few people, they don't understand how many. Because I think, and they also don't understand how important Beacon of Hope is in conjunction with our law. Because of how many there are, because that lot, the city lot, it's not, you know, thirty encampments. You're not explaining how many in in the encampment, so, you know, they're not getting an idea. So second thing is, um, when you're talking about the cleanup, you immediately went to the greenway. Well, I get that Wariqua Creek needs to be cleaned up, but the the places that are already at right now, up there by the college. Does that need to be fire mitigated still? And then those two little lots that you're talking about, um, does that need to be fire mitigated? So, you know, we have people who are saying they're willing to help, don't forget those two places.
Yeah, as far as, as far as mitigation, fire mitigation, as you said, yeah, I clean up, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. And as far, yeah, as far as numbers, um, to give you an accurate number, I'd be pretty tough, we didn't do the point in time count this this year, so. Um, through Siskiess County, and I don't know if people are aware of the point in time count, point in time count is done basically, well, we do it every other year. By HUD's definition, we have to do uh count the homeless individuals. Um, this year did not happen, we didn't do the point in time count due to COVID, COVID nineteen, so that was one of our big restrictions. We did do a shelter uh homeless count, which people think, oh, well, there's, if you're sheltered, you're not homeless, well, yes, yes, you are. There's, there's people, there are a number of people, we had, oh, God, I can't even think of what it was, um, I got the numbers written down someplace. There is a lot of individuals, actually, they're they're sheltered in Siskiess County that are homeless. And sheltered um means, as far as homeless and being sheltered, means um you could be living in an automobile. You could be at the jail at the time, you could be at the hospital at the time. Um, the county behavioral health and human services has actually programs that they house these homeless individuals in for like a week or more. Uh, and somebody, so those are actually housed homeless individuals, so that's, those were the only individuals we were able to count this last year. Um, so we didn't, we weren't able to count the the unsheltered people, and that's the ones that we see as a community. We see them, you know, along Greenway, we see them all these other places, um, approximation of of individuals. We probably have an, and I'd say upwards of at least a hundred individuals, of homeless individuals right now. That are living um with unsheltered in Wariqua area. Um, I'm sure, like I said, there's some other numbers and, yeah, give or take, I'm sure, and, um, but there. Um, there's our, you know, a lot more than people see, you know, we see them in the greenway, we see them by behavioral health, we see them on those areas. There's a lot of them hidden, you don't even see, they're hidden back in the brush unless you get out there and and beat the brush. And I know Willow, our code enforcement officer, she sees them all the time, um, I go out pretty much once a week. My wife looks at me going, what are you doing? But I actually go out in these places, I go out to Deer Creek once a week. I go out to the Greenway, then Oberlin Road once a week, I go by my house once a week, I talk to a lot of these individuals. And and find out what their story is, you know, a lot of them give you the same story that they can't find work, which is probably legit in a lot of cases, but. A lot of them actually um need some help, some sorts of mental help or something of that sort, so. There's a lot of circumstances that goes around these individuals, and until you get to uh spend a day with them. Which which I have numerous times when we do the point in time count, I actually um in charge of Siskiess County and doing the point in time count. And just got, just got nominated again to do the, head the point in time count of the seven counties of the North State. So we see uh, we see a lot of numbers in a lot of different ways when it comes to California. In fact, there was a statistic, I was gonna show you guys, or talk to, let me see if I can find it real quick. Um, that expressed on how many homeless individuals we have in the North State. But we, we have in the, as far as the West Coast, we house, I think it said twenty-two percent. Of the homeless are based in the West Coast, so there is quite a few homeless individuals. And because we have the services, we have a lot of services that can help them out, and that's what happens, and plus, we have the environment that's more inviting to these individuals too. So that's uh, that's the uh, the short and long of it, of however you wanna say, but we do have a. Um, quite a few individuals here in Wariqua because of our services, and getting back to the services, we gotta keep in mind. Why we have some of these homeless individuals here, uh, we have the jail here, if you get arrested in Tulley Lake. They, and they're homeless, they end up in Wariqua, if they get arrested in Happy Camp. And they'll end up in Wariqua, so, and plus, we have, you know, welfare, um, unemployment, all these other services. That help these individuals out too, uh, behavioral health and all these other organizations. Um, and that's why we end up with the bulk of the homelessness in in Wariqua. So just keep that in mind, is that's, you know, there's not just one thing that draws them here, it's numerous things that draw them. Plus, we're right on I, you know, I five, we have all these um quick stops that they can make right there and do a little panhandling and get on their way or stay. So, um, plus, once the word gets out, we have uh, opened it up and don't have these things for them. They kinda run, kinda run crazy, and that's what ends up happening too, so we have a lot of individuals, but they communicate to other communities. If uh they're up in Medford and right now, because of what's Medford's going on up there with their greenway and and being able to kick them out. And plus the fires they've had up there, a lot of those individuals actually have migrated down into our area. And I've, we, I know a lot of individuals that even further out here, I've seen, I've talked to individuals that are from Idaho that are from Washington. Um, so we we get a plethora of individuals, not just Wariqua locals, but low uh individuals from other areas, so. It's, it's a huge problem when you start breaking down all the factors of what's, what's the draw here, so. Anyways, that in mind, um, that's pretty much our updates on that, what else do we need to add as uh council? Do we need to add something as far as move any, any, any uh direction, any more direction for Randy? As far as, any, any, uh, direction, any more direction for Randy? Mr. Johnson, sorry.
No, he's got it, and Art clarifies when we're done.
Okay.
Do I understand right, if you have a shelter for them, and Willow or whoever is assigned these people. They can take them off of our public properties, and, and go there, how does that work?
So. Right.
But does it give you any standing position?
So, yes and no, then I know it's a kind of a, a, this answer's not gonna be a really good, clear answer. Yes, it does give us a little bit more power to, to be able to move individuals along, to certainly, if. They, they still have the right to say no, but, but there is certain ordinances, and there are certain ordinances that we're gonna be working on. That will give us a little bit more, um, power to do those sort of things, so in other words, if we have a place for them to go. And certain ordinances say that they can't be doing certain things at certain locations, then we can kick them out of those locations. And say you must, you'll go someplace else, that, at that point in time, that would give the recommendation, oh, we have a place for you to go. We have an urban campsite, we have a shelter, we have these things that have bathrooms, that have these sort of resources available there, so. There are some things, yeah, you, you're, you're right, it's, as far as, can, do we have the power to do that? Not really, I mean, that's, and it's, you know, and I know that, that the citizens don't really wanna hear that, but, but. With certain ordinances, we can enforce certain ordinances at that point in time, so it does give us, yes, it does give us some more power, so. Did you have something you wanted to add to that, Randy, I see you stepping up to the mic?
No, I didn't, but I, I believe what you just said is absolutely the, the case at the moment, uh, and the laws are changing. So it's very difficult to answer that question and have maybe the answer not be correct next week, so.
Some things, and then I, I think there's gonna be, there's some stuff that we'll be discussing in the future, so just stay tuned. We're, we're definitely working on some stuff, there's some stuff that other cities have done, that are, that are legal, that ordinances and stuff that other cities have done. So that we're actually checking into and making sure that they're perfectly legal to be able to do these things, but then again, it takes a place for them to go. To, to be able to enforce these ordinances that we're talking about, and I, like I said, I haven't mentioned the ordinances, because I don't wanna bring it up prematurely, because we need to discuss this as a council. But there is definitely some ordinances that some other cities have been doing that is legal, and they're working on, and it seems to be working, so. It's, there is hope, there is hope, yes, please. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, chief, do you have, uh, Gilman? Sorry, put you on the spot?
That's okay, this is what I do, uh, so, um, just because we have the ordinances in effect or we have laws. Doesn't mean I can force them out, you can't make people homeless, just like it takes, you know, sixty days to evict someone from an apartment. I can't go to a tent and say, you build a campfire, so you're going to jail, and I'm throwing your stuff away, so all the work we're doing, we're still bound by. Rules and regulations and laws, it would mean tickets, it would mean, you know, city fines from Willow, something like that. Um, I could make a move for an emergency, but I can't force people to be homeless, and for immunity code violation, I'm not gonna just cart them off to jail and throw their stuff away. So it's, it's a fine, it's a fine road, that's why everyone works so hard at it, it's not just an easy, do this and we're done. Right, we're, we're working on that, and we can't move them for fire danger, like we did the last time, we've already done it at least once or twice. And they were very cooperative, it's how we present it to them, and if they don't move, then we can encourage them or sometimes move their stuff. So it's a tough road, and everyone's got a hard, hard road ahead of them, but we do have some realms that we will use. But it just doesn't mean we can go just shove everything out of the way, unfortunately, everything's a step by step.
Yeah, that's a tough one, like I said, uh, certain things, like Chief was stating, that fire danger is a huge one that we can. Um, but we still have to, if, we can't just say, get out of here without giving a notice, you know, you basically have to give them the notice to, to even kick them out of there. So they have a location, they, this is their, what they call their home, this tent is, you know, it's, as much as we call our, our house our home, this is what they call their home. So in order to move them along, you can't just, so get out of here, you have to have a reason, and, and a good reason, you, you know. If you don't have a good reason, then we become liable as a city and we can get sued, and it happened, it's happened all over the country, all over. Grant's passed, lost a big lawsuit, they had one going on, they lost, um. There's one right now in Phoenix, and, and Medford has a ongoing one too, for the cleanup of the greenway there, there should stick on the, uh, the Medford one, just for the fact is. The way they presented it because of fire danger and, um, of the, uh, ordinance they presented and stuff, and have a place for them to go. So there should, there should stick on, there should be fine on Medford, but some of these other ones, unless you do it by. Yes, yeah, Phoenix, yes. Yep, well, that, no, well, that.
We won't be doing that.
Just, just so the public knows, that actually did happen here, um, this is back, uh, before Mark was on board. Uh, a few years ago, there was, uh, Chief Gilman, sorry, there was a, uh, incident here. That, uh, we cleared a camp and without giving them notice, and we, we luckily didn't get sued, but we, well. In a sense, we did, we had to give them the money to replace the tents and everything else that we moved along, because we told them to move along, we took the tents. And we didn't hold the tents as our personal property, because that's our personal property, so we did not hold them. Uh, they, word got out, and we got in trouble for it, so it's, this has been, like I said, a few years ago, so it's. We are now, we're very cautious on how we do certain things, just because of that reason, we gotta, it's gotta be careful. And because it's our personal property, just like anything else, if your vehicle is your personal property, you know, their, their tent, their belongings inside that tent. That sleeping bag is their personal property, you can't just throw it away, so it's, there's a lot of intricacies, uh, involved in this situation. And like I said, so, thank you, chief. So anyways, unless there's any further comments, we need to, uh, get this meeting over with, it's eight o'clock, and I know people are gonna turn into pumpkins soon, so. Any, any other thing we need to add? Okay, well, with that in mind, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you, thank you all, we appreciate it, and anytime.